Okay, Mayor, I will now turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council to order for July 8th, 2021, and ask our Vice Mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Present.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and livestream at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Sunday, July 11th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And the meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube page.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda.
I move approval. Second?
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer.
So, I didn't have any official meetings. I did after our last meeting where we did a resolution supporting seven districts for San Juan Unified School District. I followed that up with an email to the, to the school board, asking them to, to really, please consider voting for, for seven districts. That was followed up by an email from Zima Creason requesting a call. I had a great conversation with her. It does seem as though, I, I'm optimistic that, that the potential of having seven districts in San Juan Unified School District seems to be well into consideration. So, I, I'm delighted. I also got an email from Trent with the school district, kind of outlining, and he sent me the, the maps of both five districts and seven districts, and it does really look like the seven district does make a lot of sense. So, anyhow, I, I'm just, I can't say how much I support that idea. I think that, at the very least, we could potentially have two school board members that split the Citrus Heights. That would be the, in my opinion, a very good outcome. Or we have one that, that represents Citrus Heights. So, I'm, I'm following that very closely, and again, I just want to commend my fellow council members in that motion to, to, to support seven districts so that we have better representation on the San Juan Unified School Board. So, other than that, that's, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July weekend. It was really enjoyable. The weather cooperated. It wasn't too, too hot. It's not going to be like this weekend. It's going to be quite, quite hot. And so, we did have quite a lot of fireworks activities as expected, and hopefully we're, we can bring that under control sometime soon. So, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Councilmember Bruins.
Thank you. I too did not have any official meetings because all the boards are on hiatus right now. But I just want to follow up Tim's comments on the seven districts. I too support that, and if you will, you can pull the maps down either from the school's website or from the Sentinels article, and if you print them, the 75% of their size, it will print out on an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. And I did that this afternoon, and I just encourage everybody to take a good look at, at the, particularly the four maps in the seven districts, to see which ones make sense for Citrus Heights. I printed them out. I haven't studied them yet, but I'm going to. I can look at the, the five districts. Just looking at them don't make a lot of sense for Citrus Heights. So, I'm glad to hear, Tim, that they're moving towards seven. And next week, our PAL board is meeting. We are actively, we have activities for the kids. We've had one event. We've got one Saturday out at the, at the lake. So, PAL is up and running again. So, if you've got children that are up through maybe junior high and younger that need some summer activities and want to be around our police department and other kids that are benefiting from this program, get on our website and sign your kids up. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you. I hope everybody had a good July 4th. It was a lot of fun. I was quite surprised at the level of, of explosions going on. And I know we're going to get a report a little bit later about some actions that the city took, but, you know, if you had the opportunity to get together with your family and have a great time, that's wonderful. And if you were responsible for blowing things up in the sky, shame on you. And so, the only thing, other thing is the earthquake today. I hope everybody survived, and we will rebuild, and everything will be fine. And if you didn't know we had an earthquake or felt one today, it wasn't too bad. So, that's it.
Thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Middleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing officially to report from any of the boards. They're on hiatus, as Councilmember Bruins stated. However, we did have our vaccine clinic on the 26th of July, of June, sorry, and it was really great. A lot of folks came out. And folks that own small businesses here in Citrus Heights and couldn't make time were able to come out on Saturday, get their shopping done over at Sam's Club, and also get vaccinated and got a pair of tickets to Sacre Public.
Very good. Thank you, Portia. And for myself, nothing to report. No board meetings. I did get a flyer here for National Night Out from Neighborhood Areas 7, 8, and 9. Chasin', they're going to be doing an event from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on August 3rd at CBR C Park Picnic Area, which is on Oak Avenue. And there's going to be food, free food, chips, drinks, and dessert, potluck, games, and kids' activities. And I haven't heard from the chief. I take it we'll be, our police department will be out in force on National Night Out. Maybe later when he's, we have him on for the Fourth of July, we can talk a little bit about that. All right. And if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item.
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, the city clerk will allow you to unmute your microphone. And I do not have any public comment to read this evening. I do have three members of the public here to speak, and I'll call the first one is Kathy Morris.
Mr. Mayor, you just shook my thunder. So, that was, I just wanted to tell everybody about a National Night Out. And yes, we expect the police to participate, and we also, of course, naturally invited the fire department as well. This is Area 7, 8, and 9, but we are open for all of Citrus Heights. So, we are having barbecue, hamburgers, hot dogs, goodies like that, and also lots and lots of activities for the kids, okay? You know, painting, painting rocks and playing games and fun like this. This is, it's the 3rd of August, so it's a ways away, but I wanted to put it out there. We will be doing more promotion, and we have local involvement. It's kind of fun to get together again and as groups with people you haven't seen for a while, and so we're really looking forward to it, and we hope you can join us.
Good to see you. Thanks.
And our next speaker is David Warren.
Good afternoon. My name's David Warren. I'm here because I continue to be concerned about the city manager's position. I checked with the California Association of, California City Managers Foundation and still found that there had been no job posting. So, I've provided the city council with just such a job posting. You don't need to send a request for contract to me. I'll, it took me a couple hours. If you want to send me 150 bucks or nothing, it doesn't matter. It's free to the city. The only thing it's missing is the point of contact for the city and whatever the address to mail, the resume, and other supporting information. I am greatly concerned that the process is going so slowly because of the double dipping of the city manager. I'm also concerned that I don't know how the process is going to go forward. It seems to me it's very important that the process be open to all members of the community. The city should, each of the city council members should select an individual from the community to sit on a board, to go through resumes that are received by the city, to make recommendations of the top three or five nominees, which must and should have, at a minimum, a master's degree in public administration, at least five years of experience, is either a deputy city manager or a city manager in a community of close to our size. Also, no one on the selection committee, or anyone considering a nominee, should have any relationship as an employee, employer, employee, as a contractor, et cetera, with any nominee to be presented to the city. The appearance of impropriety and favoritism would be extraordinarily improper for the city, and I believe would denigrate the credibility of the city council, which was, which is absolutely unnecessary. I think that, excuse me, that we must make sure there's no favoritism suggested in the selection process. This can be avoided by each city council member selecting a competent individual to resume, to review resumes that are submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Ray Medina.
Hello, everyone. How you doing?
Good evening.
I wish I had a lighter note on something to report on. I've been living in Citrus Heights for 15 years now, and I love it. It's a great city and everything like that. But I have a complaint. It's, it's getting, it's getting rough right now. There's a big meth epidemic going on. It's getting out of control. And now they're mixing the fentanyl with the meth, and if it's in the air or anything like that, people can die. That's how deadly it is. Now, I found syringes. I deal with the people. I got a scar on my head from two summers ago fighting with them. And me and the Citrus Heights Police Department are very close about trying to get this handled, and I've been with them helping. They've been doing a phenomenal job, but there's only so much they can do. And they're limited. They're very limited to people. My biggest complaint is, it's a, it's a culture over there. It's a meth culture. It's a dead-end street. It's a cul-de-sac on Tierra Way. I've been there 15 years, and I've just watched it get worse, worse, worse. It's the people, they, they live in the apartments, that they socialize with the homeless people, and the homeless, the homeless people are the ones with the drugs. I don't know what you guys can do. I've been dealing with this enough for at least five years, and it's just been getting worse. So, that's my complaint right there. And I just, I wish it would get better. I wish there was something to be done because I like living there. So, I don't know what else to say. I just, like I already told you, I'm talking to the police department and everything like that, and if you guys can chime in and do something, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, any online?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, well, with that, we can move on.
The next item is consent calendar, item four.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? Consent calendar is approved.
The next item is public hearing, number five. The subject is resolution to record delinquent solid waste service charges to the property tax rule. The recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and hear any persons having objections to the proposed collection of delinquent solid waste charges, and then adopt a resolution to record delinquent solid waste service charges on the tax rule.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is Mary Poole with the General Services Department. And I have shared my screen, but I just want to make sure, Amy, that I've got it. Okay, I see it. Thank you. It's nice to be able to verify it up on the council chamber as well there. The item before you tonight is the resolution of intent to record residential delinquent garbage and recycling services, or charges on the tax rule. This is an action that the city takes on an annual basis to assist Republic Services in collecting past due charges associated with the residential garbage and recycling collection services agreement. Tonight, staff is recommending the council hold the public hearing and then adopt a resolution of intent to place delinquent charges on the tax rule. I do have a few slides to briefly summarize the process. City derives its authority for this action through the government code and through the city's municipal code, which provides, one, the authority to record the charges, penalties, and interest on the annual tax rule, and, two, it also provides that a public hearing is to be held to hear objections to the proposed action, to the amount of charges, or to vote. This is a summary of the amounts that were due in May, and then, just to show you the comparison, a month later, as of June 10th, we now have 868 accounts versus the just over 1,000 accounts that we had in May. So, as we get closer to the actual levy date, people continue to pay their delinquent charges and bring their accounts up to date. So, just to go over the process and the timeline, so on June 10th, the city council set the public hearing for June 8th, which is July 8th, which is tonight. The city published the notice of public hearing in the Citrus Heights Messenger. Republic Services mailed out notices of the public hearing information to all of the past due account holders. Tonight is the public hearing. Once that is held, and should the council approve the resolution, then there will be a final reconciliation to the, completed in August. So, if anyone pays their past due charges up to that point, we'll correct those on the levy list, and then the city submits the list and the amounts due to the county to be placed on the tax rule. The county then forwards the payments that they receive as the result of the taxes coming in, in January and May, and the city forwards those payments that are due to Republic. So, we've had questions in the past about, you know, what are the kinds of numbers that we're dealing with every year? Are there changes? And we, this slide just shows you the range of, of charges that are running delinquent on a year-to-year basis, and as you can see, they really vary. They typically, when we're in the month of May, doing our initial intent review with the council, they're running between $350,000 and $430,000 in past due amounts, and of course, that decreases as we get closer to the August finalization date. And with that, I leave you with the motion, and am available to answer any questions. And we do have Republic Services staff also here, available to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Any questions for Mary? If not, I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak can come forward now, and not see anybody rush to the podium?
And I do not see any raised hands.
Oh, very good. Thank you for checking. I will close the public hearing. Any discussion or a motion?
I move approval of the resolution to record delinquent solid waste service charges on the tax rule.
Aye, second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you. The next item is regular calendar, item number six. The subject is to initiate proceedings for fiscal year 21, 22 annual update landscape maintenance assessment districts 9801, 9802, and 0301. And the recommendation tonight, there are three resolutions to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for landscape maintenance assessment districts 9801, 9802, and 0301. And then there are three resolutions for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 21, 22, Assessment District 9801, 9802, and 0301.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and council members. I'm Leslie Blumquist with the General Services Department, here tonight with Regina Cave regarding the landscaping assessment districts. Pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the city must update the assessments for various landscape assessment districts each year. Tonight's item is the first of two steps necessary to initiate proceedings for fiscal year 21, 22 update for the various landscape assessment districts. The act of your consideration tonight is to adopt six resolutions, two per assessment district. The first to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972. The second resolution is regarding the intentions to levy and collect the assessments for fiscal year 21, 22, and sets a public hearing date for the assessments, which is recommended to occur on July 22nd. So, we have the motions. I think Regina is going to share her screen with the motions for your consideration tonight. And we are available for any questions.
Are we doing each one individually?
I think, Ryan, do we have to do each one individually?
Yes, please.
I thought so. Yes. And these, I have a question before a motion. These are all fully funded?
So, all of these, this is Regina Cave, General Services Department. Mayor, all of the assessment districts and the zones within these assessment districts all include escalators, and they are all at this present time fully funded. We are, however, proposing an increase on one of the zones. This is the first time since inception in 2004, and this would be for 0301 Zone 2. This is the Stock Ranch Residential Zone, right behind City Hall, and this is a location or a zone that is in joint effort for maintenance with the city as well as with the Park District. And the reason for the recommendation of increasing by 4% at this time, again, this is the first time since inception, is to ensure continued maintenance efforts by Sunrise Park District, as well as by city contract forces, and to ensure that we retain and preserve as much of the reserves as we can, if possible. At this time, the recommendation of 4% will net only approximately $700 a year. However, if we foresee in continuing years to implement this 4%, we still, at some point, will be able to afford additional increases that we foresee year over year. Typically, we see about a 3% to 5% increase in cost for services, and so, again, we still need to make sure that we're ensuring that we have sufficient funds within our reserve to cover these costs.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Shall we start?
Sure.
All right.
Do you want to do the honors?
Okay. I move that we approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 9801.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? And that motion carries.
Anybody else? I move that we approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 9802, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take this one, Jean.
Any opposed or abstentions? And leading off the third?
Okay. So, I move that, number three, resolution, city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 03-01, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer and seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? And that motion carries. Oh, there's more.
I'll take this one, too. Ready?
Go for it.
I move the resolution to the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, for the intention to levy collected assessments for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 9801.
Second.
All right. Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstentions? All right. Four down, two to go.
Okay, I'll, I'll do the next one, too.
Okay.
I move a resolution to the city council of Citrus Heights, California, for the intention to levy the collected assessments for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 980-02, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions? Or no?
I move the resolution of the city council of Citrus Heights, California, for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 03-01, Zones 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And I think that takes care of that item. On to the next.
The next item, number seven. The subject is initiate proceedings for fiscal year 21, 22 annual update for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701, and to adopt a resolution for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 21, 22 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701.
Good evening again, Mayor Miller. Councilmember Leslie Blumquist, General Services Department. This item is similar to the previous and is also pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. The action for your consideration is to adopt two resolutions for Assessment District 9701, the first to initiate proceedings, and the second regarding intentions to levy and collect the assessments for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and setting the public hearing date for July 22nd. Thanks, Regina, and if you have any questions, we are here to answer.
Any questions here?
We'll get right into it. So, I move approval of the, of the resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number 97-01, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, seconded by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
I move a resolution to the city council of the city of Citrus Heights, California, for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 for Landscape Maintenance Assessments District Number 97-01, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? And motion carries. Thank you, Leslie.
The next item, number eight. The subject is Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District, initiate proceedings for fiscal year 21, 22 annual update. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for the Citrus Heights Lighting District, and a resolution for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 21, 22 for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
Hi again, council. Leslie Blumquist, General Services Department. I'd actually like to introduce Hunter Young, Principal Civil Engineer, who will be walking us through this item tonight.
Good evening, council members. Pleasure to be with you. Similar to the previous items that we've seen tonight, each year the city of Citrus Heights is required to update the assessments related to the Citrus Heights lighting industry. Tonight's item is the first of two steps necessary to initiate proceedings for the fiscal year 2020, or 2021 and 2022 update. The Citrus Heights Lighting District includes all parcels in the city and funds the operation and maintenance of all 4,741 streetlights and safety lights located within the city limits. No changes are recommended to the assessment rates in conjunction with the annual update. However, over the past fiscal year, new streetlights and infrastructure However, over the past fiscal year, new streetlights and infrastructure has been installed as part of various capital improvement projects or private land development projects. Staff has updated the assessment roll to reflect the updated rates for several individual parcels that now benefit from street lighting that did not in previous years. The action for your consideration this evening is to adopt two resolutions. The first to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, and approve the engineer's report, which describes the proposed levels of maintenance in fiscal summary. The second resolution for your consideration is regarding intentions to levy and collect the assessments for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 for the lighting district, and sets a public hearing date for the assessments, which at this time is recommended to occur on July 22. We're happy to accept any questions that councilmen have.
Any questions? I did have a question on the unscheduled maintenance costs and knockdowns. Is that related to cars hitting our light poles and such?
Typically, it is. If there's an accident of some sort and there's a knockdown, then we will note that, and if it's possible to recuperate those costs through insurance companies of the vehicle owner, the city will pursue that avenue to get reimbursed.
Ah, very good. I noticed we're have a shortfall of about $122,000. Does that come out of the general fund?
It is. It's, I think there might be a slight air in that. It's about $100,000, but it is coming from Measure N, which is some funding for roadway maintenance.
Okay, so that takes care of the shortfall. Any other questions?
I move we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, to initiate proceedings pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 for the Citrus Heights Lighting District. Second.
Motion by Middleton, seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? The motion carries.
I'll also move a resolution for the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, for the intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for the Citrus Heights Lighting District.
I'll second that, too.
Okay. Motion by Middleton, seconded by Bruins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Hear any? That motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Young, for your report.
Thank you.
The next item is Department Reports, number nine. The subject is Public Works Project Update by the General Services Department.
Good evening again, council. Leslie Blumquist with the General Services Department, back again for the update on capital improvement projects. Share my screen. Doesn't want to. There it goes. All right, it's that time of year, and as you've driven around town in the past few weeks, you've probably seen some construction, lane closures, and maybe even seen some of our completed improvements. The next few slides will provide some detail on these and some upcoming projects. The first project is the 2021 Residential Street Resurfacing Project. The construction contract for this project was awarded on June 10. Construction to resurface 14 roadways throughout the city will begin next Monday and take several months. Funding for this project comes from SB 1 Road Maintenance and Gas Tax Funds. Next is the LED Streetlight Conversion Project. This project will convert 593 streetlights to energy-efficient models. To date, we've converted over 520, and we're awaiting additional material delivery to continue. These conversions are funded through a low-interest loan from the California Energy Commission as well as rebates and incentives from SMD. The table in the slides shows the maximum loan amount. However, actual costs are anticipated to be much less, as we were able to work with our on-call electrical contractor to ensure favorable pricing for the installations. After the project is complete, we are anticipating a reduction in over $31,000 annually in the streetlight electricity bills from SMD. This savings is what will be used to pay back the loan, which, once repaid, the city will see the cost reduction. As part of this project, we've developed an interactive map on the project website. If you visit the site, you'll be able to zoom in and out on the map, see the exact locations of the streetlights that have been and have yet to be converted, and stay up to date on the progress of this project. We are anticipating that all conversions will be complete by September. The construction contract for the various signalized intersection safety improvement project was awarded on December 10, 2020. Funding for this contract comes primarily from a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant and CBPG funds, with other supplemental funds as applicable. Although the contract was awarded back in December, we had a significant amount of material to order, including over 160 signal heads and approximately 2,500 linear feet of fence panels. This material took several months to arrive after the initial order, and we started construction in June. Work is anticipated to be complete by October. The project has several components, including upgrades to the size of the vehicle signal heads at 30 intersections, retrofit of existing padheads to include the countdown feature at eight intersections, installation of new padheads, push buttons, and pedestrian phases at two intersection on sunrise in front of the mall, ADA upgrades at those same two intersections, and installation of the 2,500 linear feet of median fencing along three legs of the Greenback Auburn intersection. Here are some pictures of the new signal installs. The picture on the left shows two of the signal indication replacements. These were increased in size, as well as having the retroreflective yellow tape around the back plate. Both the increased size and the addition of the yellow border will increase visibility of the signal heads with the goal to reduce rear end and broadside collisions. The picture on the right shows a countdown padhead. This feature provides pedestrians with the amount of time left to cross the street and has been shown to reduce pedestrian-involved crashes at intersections. After the upgrade at the 10 intersections as part of this project, all signals within the city will have the countdown feature. This slide shows some pictures of the new median fence that's been installed. Previously, the type and aesthetics of this fence went through a significant public engagement to select the product that's currently being installed. We're about a third of the way through the installation of the fence, which has been completed within the landscape area of the planters in the medians. The contractor will next be installing the fence within the concrete hardscape portion of the medians. The next project is the Mariposa Avenue Safe Road to School Phase 4 project. This construction contract was awarded on May 13, and construction began in June. The project is funded primarily with an active transportation program grant with measuring funds as the local match. We're anticipating this project to be complete in October. The project will install the missing sidewalk, bike length, and street lighting between Skycrest Elementary School and Madison Avenue. It also includes upgrades to the traffic signal at Madison and Mariposa to include pedestrian push buttons, countdown padheads, and additional pedestrian crossing enhancements. We've also been working with the county on resurfacing a couple of our shared roadways, the first being Madison Avenue. The county's contractor is currently working on the resurfacing of Madison from just west of Dewey to just east of San Juan. The county is managing the contract, and we're providing support and city inspection. Work includes installation of video detection at the signalized intersection, roadway repaving, repairing the damaged median noses, and then we'll finish up with the restriping. We also coordinated with the county to resurface Kenneth from Oak to Elm. The county's portion extends to Central, but this portion is the area that is shared jurisdiction with the city. The work on Kenneth includes new ADA-compliant curb ramps, replacing damaged sidewalk, roadway repaving, new striping to narrow the travel lanes and install bike lanes, as well as other traffic calming measures. In addition, this project included major pedestrian and traffic safety enhancements at the intersection of Oak, Wachtel, and Kenneth. Prior to resurfacing, the city installed a large bulbout on the northwest corner of the intersection. For quite some time, we've heard from neighbors about safety concerns at this intersection, including high vehicle speeds, long and inconsistent pedestrian crossing distances, vehicles doing donuts in the intersection and limited sight distance. The new bulbout significantly reduces the pedestrian crossing distance, narrows the travel lanes, which has been shown to reduce vehicle speeds, as well as installed buffered bike lanes and crosswalks. Originally, the eastbound direction of Oak had both a yield for right-turning cars and a stop for through and left. This was very challenging for pedestrians, and the intersection is now fully stop-controlled. In addition, by installing the bulbout, we significantly reduced the size of the intersection, and we're hoping this will also reduce the frequency of donuts at the intersection. For all the county's shared projects, we're contributing a max of $1.5 million. However, we're awaiting the final quantities from the county to determine the actual amount, which will be based on the amount of quantities installed within the city's jurisdiction. Kenneth is substantially complete, and Madison is anticipated to be complete later this month. We also recently awarded a contract for the Bonita Way-Gary Oak-Twin Oak Storm Drain Improvements Project in May. This project is currently on hold as we're awaiting confirmation from the storm drain material supplier to give us a date on when we can expect to receive the materials. There's a nationwide materials shortage right now on storm drain pipe, which is affecting our schedule. However, we are working with the contractor and are hopeful that we can start within the next few weeks. This project will install over 2,600 linear feet of new storm drain pipe, new inlets and manholes, as well as several infiltration manholes. Infiltration manholes allow water to infiltrate back into the groundwater system and is a new and innovative improvement that will provide additional benefits to the city, such as groundwater recharge, and will help further minimize potential flooding. In addition to the projects currently in construction, we continue to work towards final design on several of the projects with the goal to commence construction next year. These projects include the Greenback Lane Complete Streets Project, the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail, the 2022 Residential Street Resurfacing Project, and the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Project. That brings us to the end of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Brett?
Not a question, just a comment on the Madison project between San Juan and Dewey in that area. Wow. Just wow. You know, what a major difference, and a lot of happy, happy people, a lot of happy cars, and hopefully we can see the rest of Madison done, because that area has just been horrible. So good to see that happen.
Awesome. Go ahead.
So, thank you, Leslie. Great report. Really appreciate all the hard work on that. I am intrigued by the conversion of the LED streetlights. I'm curious, though, what's the projected lifespan for an LED light used in a in a streetlight?
Sure, the manufacturer's warranty is typically five to 10 years, although we've found that they normally last much longer, around the 15-plus-year timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to say kudos for the work you did at Kenneth and Oak and Wachtel. It's a huge improvement, and I think it's going to be a much safer intersection, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Blumquist. And I think we're ready for the next item.
Our next item is Department Report Number 10. The subject is Response to July 4th Celebrations Given by the Police Department.
Evening, Mayor Miller, members of the council. Before Acting Commander Wes Herman gives his report, I want to comment on, Mayor, your question about National Night Out. Yes, the police department absolutely will be participating in National Night Out. It is August 3rd. Starting tomorrow, local communities can register with the police department on our website for us to come visit during National Night Out, so we're happy to do that and encourage neighborhood groups to do that, to register on the police department website for National Night Out. As I turn it over to Acting Commander Herman for his report, I wanted to just start off by thanking him and his crew for their hard work over the July 4th holiday weekend. This is both July 3rd and 4th. As has been mentioned in the past, extremely difficult to enforce illegal fireworks. The emergency ordinance definitely helped us, and it was a step in the right direction. But nonetheless, as we heard, not only in Citrus Heights, but throughout the entire region, there was tremendous amount of fireworks, both safe and sane, as well as illegal fireworks throughout the Sacramento region. And so we were not the only jurisdiction to experience this. It was quite exceeded many of the other years in our past this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Acting Commander Herman for his report, and again, thank him and his crew for the hard work they did. I know it was a very busy, busy weekend. So with that, I'll give it to Wes.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of council. I'm Acting Commander for the Operations Division, Wes Herman, and today I'm going to provide just a brief summary recap of the Fourth of July weekend, our education and enforcement operation. Next slide, please. So as you're aware, the council put through a temporary urgency ordinance, which was enacted for 45 days, that prohibited the use of illegal fireworks and fined any property host who allowed such activities. The citation was administrative in nature and was to be $750 for the first offense. Any subsequent offense was going to be $1,000. The purpose was to deter illegal fireworks and to protect our community and their property, which is, of course, our primary concern. We ran an extensive social media campaign in a very intensive, short timeframe, approximately six days, designed to educate the community about this ordinance on the various social media platforms, which you see below. And those are just a few of the examples of some of the social media posts that we put out there. As you can see in the last post, we also posted notices at all of the local Safe and Sane booths that were selling fireworks in our community to help educate people between the difference between the safe and sane with the seal there and the illegal fireworks, which, of course, were not sold there. Next slide, please. So recap for the calls for service. This year, we experienced over about a 48-hour period on July 3rd and 4th, 457 firework-related calls for service. This number, as you can see, is more than double what we experienced in 2020 and exceeded 2019 and 2018 as well. In addition to that, our teams responded to another 396, which we'll call routine, calls for service, things like crimes in progress, medical aids, traffic collisions, and other urgent issues that got called in on 911 lines. So of the total, 853 calls during those 48 hours, 53% of them were related to fireworks. We also received 264 tips from the community online in a website link that we created prior to the weekend operation. We did issue, or I should say, we did identify 16 social host ordinance violation folks, folks in charge of their properties. We have referred those over to our code enforcement unit. They'll be reviewing those and pending issuance, if appropriate, of a citation in the coming weeks. We enviewed one health and safety code violation, which is to say, I'll describe that a little bit more in detail in a few minutes, but we actually saw one illegal firework being ignited, and we were able to cite that person on the spot, and we did that with the health and safety code violation citation. We seized approximately two dozen expended illegal fireworks, and we did have three shed or outbuilding/structure. It's actually two sheds and one residence, along with eight brush fires. Now, none of those at this point have been confirmed as fireworks-related. Obviously, there is a suspicion of such for some of the brush fires. I think one of them was a tree caught on fire. Generally, that doesn't just randomly happen. Next slide, please. For staffing and equipment, just to give you a little insight, we put together two days of dedicated enforcement detail. We comprised six officers that were made up into three vehicles, so they were two-person operations. That was three officers, one arson investigator, and a UAS pilot and observer. Their sole focus for the entire shift was to respond to calls coming in and to address any illegal fireworks that they enviewed or had been reported to them and take the appropriate action. In addition to that, we had 10 patrol officers and a supervisor, which was made up of two shifts that overlapped our swing shift and our graveyard shift during our busiest times, which was generally from 9:00 p.m. to about 11:00 p.m. or 12:00 p.m. I should say 12:00 a.m., sorry. We took a zero-tolerance approach, and we did that by utilizing information that we'd received. We'll call them hotspot locations. We got those from tips from the community. Sometimes we were able to get multiple tips on one location, so we would prioritize those in terms of frequency that we would visit. We obviously use social media, as I mentioned, for education purposes. We utilized the unmanned aerial system, and we used unmarked vehicles with spotters to try to observe the violators. Next slide, please. So just to touch base on a few of the challenges, as you're probably aware, Elk Grove and Sacramento also have the social host also have the social host ordinance. However, many jurisdictions did not take a proactive approach to enforcement this year. That could be due to a number of different reasons. Sometimes, they have their own events that they're staffing, such as the rodeo in Folsom. Some of them are having staffing challenges, much like we do, and so, the ability to put together dedicated teams and respond to priority calls on patrol just wasn't possible for that. We had similar call volume in several of the cities. I talked with Sacramento, they had a significant number of calls, as did we, but call volume management became an issue, and sometimes the time delay became an issue. Oftentimes, we try to triage our calls. Certainly, the highest priority get handled first, but in this case, there was such a volume of calls coming in, we often tried to go to the most recent call that came in, hoping that we could catch a violator, and that wasn't always the case. The other challenge we found is that a lot of the tips that were coming in, and I'll give you an example of this here in a minute, came in with generic locations, which is to say, I see fireworks coming from the Greenback and Auburn area. This was a challenge for officers to locate specifically where that firework was ignited from. As you might imagine, illegal fireworks don't have a ground signature pattern, if you will. They go up in the air, almost invisible, and then they ignite in the air. So, when you're looking at something that's 300, 400 feet in the air, and it's illuminated, you can see generally that it's from that region, but it doesn't tell you exactly where it was ignited from on the ground. The other thing that caused some challenges is that there was a significant number of law-abiding community members out who were gathering, who were doing the Safe and Same fireworks. Those do create a signature pattern on the ground, and so, as you drove through the streets looking for violators, you have a tremendous number of law-abiding citizens you had to look past in order to try to find those who were violating the illegal, or the ordinance with illegal fireworks. Just as an aside, I'll tell you a quick story. I came out that night and did two and a half hours of just directed enforcement to try to, my goal was to try to find as many violators as I could. My tactic was to drive to every area I saw an aerial firework, and then try to either, you know, sit quietly in the dark for a minute and see if I could see who was doing it, or maybe just drive the street in an unmarked vehicle. In that two and a half hours, I was able to identify one gathering, one group of party goers, if you will, who were doing illegal fireworks. Not a great stat, obviously, for two and a half hours, but I just, I tell that because I want you to understand the challenge of trying to figure out where exactly these come from. I could see them all above me, I could see them what looked like a street or two over, and then I'd pull around the street and wait for them, and I had no indication where they were coming from. Sometimes, they might have even been coming from backyards. Next slide, please. So, what are the opportunities? What are the considerations? I understand this is a temporary ordinance at this point. I think we're on the right path. I think we did make some forward progress. I think the goal here is to try to deter illegal fireworks from our community, and if this, the direction of the council to go long-term, I think we were on the right path to doing that. You know, if we decide to make this a permanent order, if that's the will of the council, we would probably have a longer timeline in the future to do more education and more outreach, to try to put together different operations, if you will, to try to deter illegal fireworks. Certainly, you could ban fireworks altogether, if that was your purview. I'm sure that would be met with some resistance, but if that wasn't the desire of the council, and we decided we wanted to make an even greater impact next year, we would need to significantly increase the enforcement detail, the numbers of officers dedicated to this detail in the future. There was a significant strain, as you might imagine, on our 911 system. That number of calls coming into four dispatchers, as you might imagine, it created quite a chaotic room for a period of time, and bogged down many of our technology systems. The other thing that, you know, really, every city in the state of California who is experiencing these challenges is considering is, is what can the state do to prevent the purchase and transportation of these illegal fireworks into California? Maybe there's other undercover operations that could be had at the state level. Maybe that's something we could look at at the local level as well, if we had staffing for that type of unit in the future. Next slide, please. And so, with that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have, council.
Yeah, thank you, Lieutenant, Acting Commander Herman. Any questions?
Well, I just, maybe even be, might be a rhetorical question, but I'm just appalled at the volume that has over, more than doubled since last year, and I know Sacramento, they were on the news, had a similar statistic, and so, can you put your finger on any reason why? Is there just been a greater volume of illegal fireworks coming across the border? What are we, any thoughts on that, Commander?
You know, council member, I don't know specifically what would have caused that. I mean, certainly, I could make a lot of speculations with regards to COVID or people being locked up for the last year. I don't know what drove it, to be honest with you. You know, I've talked to some of the neighboring agencies as well, those who have chosen just to turn a blind eye to it. Some of those have turned it over to their fire department, and no one really has a good idea of what's spawning kind of the increase, you know, this year.
Thank you.
So, I just, I'm going to start out with a comment, and I'm just stunned as, in my neighborhood, how many the M-80s, the explosions that were going on, I just got to think the amount of tonnage of illegal fireworks that exists in our community. And it's just, it's just, to me, it's mind-boggling that, it's got to be a tremendous amount of illegal fireworks, and it seems like, I mean, they're doing an incredible job of concealing where they're coming from. I do have a question about the 16 potential violations. Can we get an update as though that progresses through, so that we know, you know, if we decide to make this a permanent thing, knowing how effective, or, you know, if, you know, one of these 16 turns into a, turns into an actual bona fide violation, or turns into all 16 of them do, we'd certainly like to know, have some kind of quantification on, in order to decide whether we can move forward with this, making this ordinance permanent.
Chief, would you like that one?
Sure, you know, absolutely, council member. We can give you a follow-up update as to the 16 violations and what happened to them, whether they were upheld or dismissed. But I ask you also to keep in mind that we see this as a long game, not the short game, and so, while we might, we can certainly give you the update on those 16 violations, the reality is educating our community into the future, in future years, is the objective that we have, and this is one more tool that will give us the opportunity to curtail illegal activities in the future. So, this year is important, but next year and the years after are equally, if not more important to us.
Thank you, Chief. Great, thank you.
And I think we all are aware that this isn't going to be an overnight fix, and it's a start, and I'm pleased that we got the results that we did. I think it's important, too, that we, through either public service announcements, or press releases, or articles in the, a couple of local papers that we have, that we let the public know that this is serious, we're serious about this. We want to stop illegal fireworks in Citrus Heights and curtail it as much as possible. So, I would encourage you also, Chief, to get those results put out to the public, let them know. We are, this is just the beginning. We are going to enforce this resolution, and, you know, it's going to come back to us, so I just ask the council to seriously consider making this permanent. Thank you.
Well, it was a little more than the dull roar I had hoped for. It was, but one thing I did notice, and I don't know if this happened in all neighborhoods, it did seem to calm down, not at 11 when we asked, but around midnight, 12:30, finally seemed to calm down. I know there was the random ones at 4:30 in the morning, and I know we've made the police department's job very difficult with dealing with the fireworks. It's a cat and mouse game, you're running all over, and you're right, it's hard to tell where they're coming from and who's doing it, but we have raised awareness. I'll tell you, folks, the end game here is, if we can't get a handle on these illegal fireworks, we're, it's going to be all fireworks, and nobody's going to be happy. But that is one of the ways, you mentioned it in your report, Lieutenant Herman, is that, that is one method, and I don't want to go there. I think Safe and Same have a place in our celebrations, and hopefully, we can get a handle on this. Public awareness has been raised, and any suggestions that would make law enforcement's job any easier on this would be highly welcome.
Well, one suggestion I have is, and that is that we approach the county. You know, we are bordered on three sides by county property, and who's to say that the fireworks went off in Orangeville, or went off in Citrus Heights, or Fair Oaks, or Antelope on the other side? So, I think it would be important for us to schedule a meeting with our supervisor and see if we can't get some county buy into this and get this on their agenda, so that this can be something county-wide that will be consistent with what we're doing Sacramento and Elk Grove.
Well, and I really like your suggestion from our last meeting, where the ag stations could be checking for this at the borders at the state level.
Yeah, that's the other thing, is take it statewide, you know, and actually check the vehicles, just don't just pass them through, so. But I realize that's an even longer and bigger approach to it, so let's take it incrementally and see if we can't be effective, and if not, let's go all the way.
You guys have said it all.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Acting Commander, for your report.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The next item is City Manager Items.
And this evening, thank you.
Next item is Items Requested by Council Members or Future Agenda Items.
Anything? Any more items? No, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.